I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, September 23rd, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file. Will you update us?
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. In the consent agenda, we have some financial reports from June of 2024. We also have several personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, and we have resignation and a declined position. We also have in the table file an updated preliminary proposed tax levy presentation and accompanying tax impact document.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff, second by Cory. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, item three is our public comment, and we do have four people signed up to give public comments. And I will call TJ Austin up first. Welcome TJ.
Thank you very much. My name is TJ Austin. I'm the agricultural food and natural resources instructor, also the FFA advisor at the Northfield High School. I come to you tonight to really thank you for your continued support and providing opportunities for the student population of Northfield. It's a growing program, which has been really fun to be the leader of. Currently this fall, we're running the animal science class, and we are very fortunate to have the raider goats, if you will call them, where students are doing hands-on experiential learning, really every morning with morning chores and getting to do that. So that's been a huge help. We've been reaching out to local veterinarians, getting some guest speakers in. We have fish wildlife forestry run right after that. Currently, we're going over Department of Natural Resources and the forestry. Third period, we've got introduction to agricultural, where we talk about the exports, imports, all the commodities coming in and out of Minnesota, along with the river systems, the Minnesota, the Mississippi, I'm 35, 94 corridors. Moving into small engines, we talk all about the operations of a four-stroke engine, community partners such as Midwest Machinery, Minnesota Ag, Small Engines Unlimited, and then we move into automotive mechanics. So with the curriculum as a three-part program, you have your agricultural curriculum, you have your supervised agricultural experience, and then we have the FFA piece. And so the FFA piece, I bring along three of our officers here. I have Hector Villanueva, who is our 24-25 Sentinel, and I brought two student advisors also with me, Grant Kraft and Lily Dubon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we will call up Hector Villanueva to come up and give some comments. Welcome Hector.
Hey, my name is Hector Villanueva. I'm the 2024 to 2025 Sentinel for the class. And FFA has really opened my eyes for agriculture and its learning and its opportunities. It's built me courage to participate in different career paths that I never thought I would participate in. I want to say thank you again for your guys' support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you Hector. Okay, next up is Grant Kraft, giving some comments.
Hi, I'm Grant Kraft. I'm the 2024-2025 Student Advisor. FFA has given me many different leadership opportunities, but it also pushed me out of my comfort zone a lot, and I would like to say thank you for your support.
Well, thank you. And then Lily Dubon.
Good evening. Tonight, I just want to start off by saying thank you for your support. My name is Lily Dubon, and I'm the 2024-2025 Student Advisor for Northfield FFA, in which has helped me to become a better person, not only for myself, but for the community, for providing agricultural experiences and coming out of my comfort zone in a wide variety of ways to learn and grow in the agricultural community. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. Those are all the public comments that we have for tonight. We're on to item four, announcements and recognitions. Do you have any announcements or recognitions, Dr. Hillman?
I do. I have several this evening. First, we want to congratulate Senior Soren Powers, who has been selected as a 2025 National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. On September 11th, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced approximately 16,000 national semifinalists. This represents less than 1% of high school seniors in the United States. Soren and the other semifinalists across the country now have an opportunity to continue in the competition for 7,140 National Merit Scholarships that are worth nearly $28 million, and those will be offered to the finalists next spring. So congratulations to Soren, top 1% in the country in the National Merit Scholarship Program. We also want to congratulate Allison Matthews and Noah Barini, who have been named as commended students in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. Now, commended students are placed among the top 5% of the students across the country who entered the 2025 competition. To qualify these students, both the semifinalists and the commended students, they took the 2024 Preliminary SAT, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And those students who have been named commended students are demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. The students represent a valuable national resource, recognizing their accomplishments as well as their key role they play in schools and their academic development, and they are vital in the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. So we congratulate Allison and Noah on being commended students, again, top 5% nationwide in the National Merit Scholarship Program. So we congratulate Soren, Allison, and Noah for being recognized under that program. It is time for your sesquicentennial minute, which I know you're all very excited about. And this time, this is where Tim pulls up a great little photo that we've got here. So tonight's sesquicentennial minute comes from page five of the City of Schools book that we've been talking about, so celebrating the school district's 150th anniversary. The image that you see on the screen is the central school. It was really the first high school built in Northfield in 1874, and the Rice County Journal called it really the most substantial, the first substantial building in the city's history. It was described as a large commodious building, a pressed brick, three stories high, and quite a large basement. It was built for, wait for it, $30,000. There was a lot of community pride in what was considered one of the finest schoolhouses in the state. And as we might expect, there were also complaints from residents that the new school was unnecessarily, even shamefully, large. And the Rice County Journal later opined that the new school was a quote-unquote "good value and wise investment", and detailed each of the school's four floors in great detail. It talked about the basement having six good, well-lighted rooms with 10-foot ceilings. I'm quoting here, so this is their language, not mine. The first story had six classrooms with 13-foot ceilings, the second story had four classrooms, and two large recitation rooms with 14-foot ceilings. The high school rooms were nearly double the size of other classrooms, and the third story was quote-unquote "well-ventilated and easily worn by five Fuller and Warren companies patented hot air furnaces, and with short commonsense ventilation system, contained the great hall and an auditorium with 715 chairs. The height of the main structure was over 60 feet, surmounted with a splendid bell tower. And in short, the editors wrote, "It is a splendid building and an ornament to the town, and worth its cost in respect to the influence it will exert on public buildings hereafter." So again, that is from the City of Schools, page five, and the image that you see now. Just for your location, that building actually stood where the current White's Center stands. But that building was on that corner of, Dr. Hardy, Union and Third? Union and Third, so right where the existing White's Center is, which was the previous Northfield Middle School, previous Northfield. The building actually sits in that footprint. So that part of town, a lot of the original education buildings, that's where they were. And so again, in our 150th anniversary, we're committed to sharing some stories of the school district, and we thought that this was a good one for this evening. So that is your sesquicentennial more than one minute for September 23rd.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Board members, do you have any announcements or comments that you would like to share with the board? Okay, I have one, and that is that our Dr. Hillman received another recognition, another award, and so I'll read some of that award to you now. "On behalf of the Minnesota Community Education Association, MCEA, I am thrilled to inform you that you have been selected as the recipient of the 2024 Supportive Administrator of the Year Award. You were nominated for the award by Erin Bailey. This award is in recognition of your exceptional dedication, leadership, and advocacy for the community, for community education in your district. Your unwavering support for community education initiatives has not only enriched the lives of countless individuals in your community, but has set a high standard of excellence that inspires your peers across the state. Your commitment to fostering strong partnerships and creating opportunities for lifelong learning is truly commendable. The MCEA is honored to celebrate your accomplishments and the positive impact you've had on both your district and the broader community education field. The award will be presented during the 2024 MCEA Fall Conference Awards Luncheon, October 24th. Congratulations and well-earned."
Thank you.
All right, we're on to item five, which is items for discussion and reports. And first up, we have the District Youth Council update. The DYC co-chairs Annika Reister and Allison Matthews will update the board about their plans for the 24-25 school year. Welcome, Annika and Allison.
Hi, I'm Allison Matthews.
And I'm Annika Reister.
And we're this year's DYC co-chairs.
So the purpose of DYC is to serve as a bridge between the student body and the school board. Last year, we hosted many different things, some of which include the menstrual products supplied during breaks, such as winter break and spring break. We hosted a school board brunch, as well as a referendum forum for the upcoming election, and a survey about the purposes and uses of CCR.
And looking forward to this year, our DYC has 17 members broken into two subcommittees, one handling relations with the school board and one with the student body. And this year, we have already had a referendum forum a few days ago. It was very successful. And then, looking forward, we have our candidate forum coming up. And then in spring, we'll have a cultural heritage fair and the school board brunch, and we'll continue supplying those menstrual products for school breaks. Any questions?
Wow, thank you so much. Very informative in a short time. I appreciate that. Excellent. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, Amy.
I attended the referendum forum and just wanted to congratulate you on a successful event. A lot of students showed up, a lot of good information was shared, and it was really fun to be there and see everybody in action. I also have a question. I'm delighted you're going to have a candidate forum, and I'm one of the candidates, but I will be unable to attend that day. Would I be able to submit just some statement or something? Or you don't have to answer today, but I just want to let you know that.
Yeah, thank you. We'll definitely be reaching out to you on the forum, and we'll probably get some sort of comment from you to present to the student body there.
Thank you.
Nice. Anyone else? Cory?
Thanks for being here. Appreciate the presentation, and congratulations on last week's event. It was really well done, and it was great to see so many people there, so many students there. Question for both of you. Looking to this year, what is one personal goal you have through the DYC, and then what event or program are you looking forward to the most?
I personally really want to improve our communication between both, like, within the District Youth Council and outside of it. So we really learn to work together more, and then apply that to, like, the entire school and school, like, district setting. And then for this year, I'm probably looking most forward to the Cultural Heritage Fair that we were looking to do last year, but we didn't quite get to it. But this year, we're hoping to get that done.
Yeah, as for me, I would agree with the communication, and as well as more getting our message out to students, because a lot of students, you know, don't always hear from us. So we're trying to improve that. And then I'd agree with Ally as well. The Cultural Heritage Fair, we were thinking about doing it last year, and then it didn't quite happen with all this other stuff we had going on, so we're really excited to get that going this year.
Anyone else? Comment or question? Okay, Jenny?
Thanks Claudia, and thank you Allison and Annika for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. One is, so there's two subcommittees this year. I think you had three subcommittees last year. Is there, did you drop one just for this year?
Yeah, last year, we did have a subcommittee focused solely on equity, which this year we combined with the Student Relations Committee, because it seemed like the Equity Committee wasn't getting as much work as the Student Relations ones, so we decided to combine them to make us, like, more efficient.
That's super smart. Glad to hear that. And then also, you mentioned the Heritage Fair. Would there be something, help or resources from the community that you'd be looking to obtain to make that happen, or do you already have all the resources that you think you need?
Yeah, I'd say we definitely are looking more to the community in the future. We haven't quite, we're still in the preliminary stages of planning that yet, but we definitely want to get the community as involved as possible.
And we're also going to be reaching out to the school organizations, like the Black Student Union and other, like, cultural groups like that at the school, to see if they'll help us out and participate.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My question for you is if you could just talk about how you distribute that information. Is it social media? Are you sending some email out or text?
Yeah, we do kind of a mix of things. We do have an Instagram page that we try to kind of get out there to share as much of the information about, like, upcoming forums or events that we're hosting. And then we'll also, around the school, like, go on the announcement system, or sometimes do some tabling to kind of share the information with the student body.
Great. If there are no other comments or questions, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Okay, next we have Greenville Park Elementary School Improvement Showcase. And Principal Sam Richardson is here to provide the board with an overview of the school's successes and highlights in 23-24, and the focus areas for this academic year 24-25. Welcome, Sam.
All right. Thank you, members of the board. Dr. Hillman, thank you for having me here tonight to talk about Greenville Park Elementary. Very passionate about our school and proud of our students and our family and our staff members, so. We start our work grounded in the strategic plan and our vision, preparing every student for lifelong success, developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. We tailor that at Greenville Park with our motto, "Every Gecko, Every Day", and we really use that to help remind the students, we need them at school every day doing their best, and then that they know, we want them to know that they have 90 staff members who are there to help them achieve this vision. Our strategic commitments are tied to all of the different components that I will share with you tonight. Obviously, the people that I've mentioned that I'm so proud to work with and for, the learner outcomes, making sure that we are helping all of those students, both academically and socially, be prepared for their future. I tell students that I want them to be ready for the next grade level, but I'm also at the school, working with the staff, because we want them to be ready for life beyond school and whatever capacity that finds them. Equity, making sure that all students have fair opportunity, communicating well with all of our stakeholders, making sure that we are responsible for the resources that we are granted and given, and then seeking community partnerships. And there's no better place for community partnerships than Northfield and our community. Our district benchmarks will be referenced today as we go through the presentation. There are a few that are going to stand out more for us, and we'll be able to highlight those as we look at benchmarks such as three students reading at grade level, and also being proficient in mathematics by the end of third and sixth grade, looking at our students exhibiting physical, social, and emotional well-being, and then making sure that benchmark number eight and nine, as we look at all of our employees and our parents, that they are satisfied with our system of education. Tonight, we'll be able to share success stories. We'll be able to highlight a few of the strategies that worked well for us last year. We'll be able to focus on some highlights, and then what are those areas that we're continuing to work on this year as we start the 2024-2025 school year? And again, preparing every student for lifelong success at the core of what we're doing. As we look back and reflect on 2023-2024, there were three areas that I wanted to share briefly. We had done something unique in the past two years. We have looked at math fact fluency and reading fluency as our school improvement goal measures for learning. And so as we took a look at those goals, we really were doing something unique in that we were breaking down those foundational skills that were so important. We had strong progress in many of our grade levels, both at our school at Greenville Park, but also across the district. And while not all grade levels ended the year right at 80%, they were in proximity to that 80% goal, which we use as a measure of our system's ability to help prepare students for that next grade level and towards those state standards at that grade level. Those skills, like in a sport, it's not playing the game, but it's working on those skills you need to play the game well. So we want students who can have more automaticity when they're calculating their math facts, so that they can solve math problems that are more complicated and multi-step, and we want students who can read fluently, so that they can comprehend what they're reading at a high level at their grade level or beyond. Another component, when you talk about our strategic benchmarks, looking at benchmark nine and our strategic commitment to people and partnerships, we had set a strategic goal across all three elementaries to really focus on the question on the parent satisfaction survey. I received positive notes, phone calls, and emails about my child. Our goal was to increase our score by 1/10th, and we actually increased by 5/10ths, or .5. And this was the direct result of very strategic implementation of a plan that included all teachers and staff at the building. We had postcards that could be sent home. We had communication through digital means, such as talking points and CSOW, and the number of communications was tracked very carefully to ensure that all students were receiving positive notes, phone calls, and emails home. And then, our staff continued to learn about the families that we serve at Greenville Park, family engagement events. We'll talk a little bit more about those later in our highlights, but this was a big part of our goal last year that will continue into this year and become routine, just the way we do business for our families. Looking at the highlights for Greenville Park, one of the pieces that really matched learner outcomes and a benchmark number three was our MCA reading scores. And as I mentioned before, talking to students about wanting to help prepare them for that next grade level. In fifth grade, we're really preparing them for the middle school or their next school experience after fifth grade. Our fifth grade students, 74% of them had a passing score on the MCAs in reading. This was a big increase for the cohort of students, and I realize that's a different set of standards in fourth grade, a different assessment, but it was a huge gain for those students, and we felt really strong that what we were doing at the school from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade was recognized in this positive result as those students go on to middle school. A few of the things that we look to in this area, we have outstanding teachers, of course, with high expectations. We also had introduced structured phonics at each grade level. And the 95% core phonics, reading curriculum was introduced and provided a way to make sure that all students had those foundational skills to read at grade level, to spell grade-level content words, and we see an impact there. Also, there's a variety of tools to help students who are not reading at grade level, and that includes small group interventions, that would be a tier-two reading intervention, small group instruction during the day from the classroom teacher, that would be an extension of the core instruction. And then Reading Plus is an online individualized program that students can use with their iPads, and it really allows them to work at their level. It allows teachers to track their progress and help them if they're needing more challenge or more support. So that was a one highlight for Greenville Park last year. A second highlight that I referred to, looking at benchmark four and nine, this highlight really looks at a number of the different commitments, learner outcomes, people, communication and partnerships. The teacher teams at our school and our site team led planning efforts to connect families to the learning taking place at school. And so we had two events that were partnerships with our community school, where we had coffee with the principal and pizza with the principal that allowed families to come meet with me, hear about the good things happening at Greenville Park, and also ask questions about things that might not be clear about how they could be involved in their child's education. Then, each grade level held an event where families were invited in during the school day to participate in the learning. It could have been breakfast and a book. It could have been a Valentine's celebration, where there was singing and time to meet with their children and meet their child's teacher. There could be an event where their students were sharing learning, such as the fourth grade shared some really in-depth state reports. This event was carefully planned, and of course, we had other events that were larger, such as the PTO fundraiser celebration. And then a celebration of the arts in the spring was very well-attended, a partnership with the community school at Greenville Park, Gecko Gallery. So two ways that, both during the day and after school hours, that we've been able to connect with our families, and it was a real positive collaborative effort by our staff. And then, our third highlight, we continue to look at the ways that we support students in reading and math, but we also look at the ways that we can support students in learning social, emotional, and behavioral skills. So we have all of our staff participating in this effort, whether that's classroom teachers teaching our core curriculum, second step in the classroom. At Greenville Park, we have a character trait of the month that we teach, that we reinforce with daily announcements and lessons in the classroom. We have recognition of students at monthly meetings with our grade levels. And then, for students who need more or different, we have small groups that are focused on those, learning those skills. Sometimes they're considered friendship skill groups. Sometimes they're considered, you know, social, emotional skill groups, and those students work with our behavior coach. We had approximately 10% of our students able to meet with the behavior coach during the school year for some portion of time. And then Fernbrook School-Linked Mental Health Services are available, and we have 5% of our students are able to access those services, and having that onsite is a real gift to those students and families. So another highlight that really looks at the people and supports the learner outcomes as well, and benchmark four is the target of this highlight and this information. Looking ahead, we have a very, very impactful opportunity to reboot our math instruction, and that is through our Bridges Math Adoption, and that was a main focus of our Back-to-School Workshop Week. There was teacher leaders and our instructional team, including Hope Langston, and instructional coaches have worked very hard to lead the way with this new implementation. And so with benchmark three and eight, our learner outcomes, people, equity, you know, this focus area is really trying to set the stage so that teachers, taking on a big new implementation, have the support that they need to do that well and feel successful. Teachers will be working with support from instructional coaches. Some teachers will be working on Wednesday mornings during the PLC time, and that will be a time where they will have support from our instructional coaches. It'll be also a time where they'll be working together with teammates. There's a lot of new learning that goes with the materials management and just understanding how the curriculum is designed, and then implementing it with students. It's a quick way to learn a lot in a hurry, and then go back and reflect. Number Corner, you'll hear more about Number Corner, which is a daily calendar method for learning about computation skills, patterns, and mathematical concepts. There's an image here of a teacher showing students different patterns as they are learning with that daily routine. And then, for those students who are, you know, used to a different curriculum, this will also be a new way for students to learn, and so the teachers are excited. One teacher commented that it feels like a lot at the beginning, but they can see, and they've heard from other teachers who've gone before them, that in November, this will really feel more comfortable, and the routines will make more sense as they get deeper into the curriculum. the curriculum. Another focus area that is playing a big role in our use of time on Wednesday mornings with the PLC time that was traditionally dedicated to teams working in professional learning communities is our Science of Reading training. And so a large cohort of elementary staff members are taking part in this training. They, in line with the Read Act, they are working on learning and following in the pathway of other staff members who had already been trained in letters previous to this year. So what we have found out is that at the same time that we are learning more about the science of reading, staff members are sharing with each other strategies that are working and deepening their understanding. This new cohort of elementary staff are excited to learn from this curriculum as well. And then what we're hearing from staff members is they're starting to see the impact of the strategies that have been used with the structured literacy, and they're seeing students come into this next year with a better understanding of the routines, and they have stronger skills in the areas that teachers are focusing on. So whether it's Bridge to Read with our first, second, and third grade, or that 95 core phonics in fourth and fifth grade, they're seeing already that students are picking up much more quickly than they did that first year of the implementation. So a big shift for us as our teachers are learning from 7:30 to nine in those Wednesday morning sessions. And then finally, we have spent a lot of time learning about multi-tiered systems of support work and multi-tiered systems of support MTSS. It really, we define it as something that is taking a look at the systems that we have and trying to refine them, make them more efficient and effective. We have very talented individuals in our schools. We have outstanding programs, but braiding them together or blending them together to be the most effective that they can be takes important work. And so we have, at our buildings, design teams that have representatives from other teams and departments. So we have general ed, special education representatives, we have English language learners, we have the leaders from the different building teams that we have. We have a team of leaders for language arts and literacy. We have a team for math, and we have a team for social, emotional learning. The leads for those teams are on this team. We have other district instructional coaches that come to this meeting, and we're working really hard to strengthen our core instruction and make sure that we also are able to be proactive and not reactive when there are student needs. So we use a lot of data. We use a product called Five Lab to look at instructional data, to look at attendance data, to look at social, emotional, behavioral data, and use that to take action and support our teachers and to support our students. So that is a look at Greenville Park, look back at last year, highlights from our current work to support students, and then a look forward at an important work that we're engaging in this year. So, thank you, and any questions that you might have?
Excellent, thank you, Sam. Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Hey, Rob?
Thanks, Sam. That was a great report. I'm just wondering if you could give an example of the character traits and how they're taught, and then how they're demonstrated?
Absolutely. So a great example would be self-control would be an example of a character trait, and that would be something that we would introduce on the morning announcements, the date, the weather outside, the important things like the lunch menu. And then we would also have a short, three-to-six-sentence paragraph that defines self-control and gives some examples that might apply to students' lives. The teachers are able to reinforce that in their classroom and talk about that with their students and find examples when students are demonstrating self-control in that area, which works well. Respect and self-control work well at the beginning of the year as we're coming together as classroom communities. Then grade level meetings would meet once a month, and teachers are able to nominate students. Our office team coordinates, along with our social, emotional learning team, coordinates this process, and then students are able to be recognized. Teachers do an excellent job writing real descriptive and fact-based narratives about what the students have done to earn that recognition, and they get a nice certificate home, and they're honored in front of their peers. So last year, we honored all of the students in the school.
Excellent, thank you. Corey?
Thanks, Sam, for your showcase presentation. I had a comment, but I do want to follow up on the character trait because as someone who had two children who received this, it makes a difference. That's a tangible thing those children can bring home and feel good about. So that positive affirmation has a huge impact. And my son got it for kindness. I just want to put that out there. So I don't know where he got it from, but I did want to commend you on your leadership. You know, I've had a student at that school for eight years, and the community that's been built there is just bar none, excellent. And the communication's been wonderful, too. So that starts at the top, and obviously you have a tremendous staff there. So thank you for all the efforts you put in there. I do have a question concerning the Bridges math curriculum. I know it's three weeks into this new program. We had Ray and Hope here two weeks ago to talk about the implementation, how we got to this point. Three weeks is not a good barometer, but I'm curious how it's going so far, what feedback you've received from teachers and maybe even students?
Yes, so the, I think many of the components that I've talked with teachers about has been the materials management and just learning, you know, some of those components as we shift from September to October, teachers are already looking ahead. That Number Corner that I shared that example, it's something that has new materials and patterns each month. There's other activities that teachers just haven't worked with before, and teachers that piloted have helped share how you can prepare those materials in advance. So that's something that I've heard is that new materials, and there are some different materials that will require some preparation. I was able to observe math stations today, and there was students that were learning some different types of math concepts that I have not seen before using the everyday math curriculum, and the students were highly engaged. And the math stations format that involves some choice for students. And so I was able to watch some students make some choices about which activity they were going to engage in next, which it seemed like it was empowering for those students. So there's been a few teachers that have shared some highlights and some early wins, and I think figuring out how to organize that pathway for that next unit, for that next week's lessons, that's where the teachers are working hard on those times that they have to do that professional development on those Wednesdays. So I would say early returns are optimistic.
Right.
I had one more thing I recalled. Considering the family engagement efforts ties into the community piece I mentioned, but you highlighted a lot of great opportunities for families to be involved. I did want to highlight the Wax Museum from last year, having a third grader last year. When I was in school, I don't know about others, but I didn't grow up here. I grew up somewhere else, but fifth graders did it, and all you did was stand there on Halloween as people walked by. At Greenville, and I assume across the district, third graders are creating reports. It's, parents come in, they hear the students do reports about whatever historical figure they have. Some of them even memorized it, which I thought was outstanding for third graders. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but that was such a great event, and it was well-attended as well.
Yeah, and that, so that's a great example, third grade last year. That's been a tradition for them to have a Wax Museum. And so the students, it ties in nicely with their nonfiction reading unit. They read a lot about character from history, and there's quite a range. So you have Surfer Bethany Hamilton, you know, potentially sitting next to Alexander Hamilton in the same area. But the kids are so proud to share. It's a great way for families, extended families, to come in to the school and see what students are preparing. And it was just that, that's another example, similar to the fourth grade state report, where families were able to come see exactly what students are learning and how they presented the information that they learned, so, yeah.
Hey, anyone else question or comment? Okay, Amy?
Thanks, Sam, for your presentation and all the highlights that you've just told us, especially the parent satisfaction going up half a percent, .5 on the scale. That's fantastic. Keep it up, whatever you're doing.
Yes, that's our goal.
And then also your fifth grade reading MCA scores at 74%, that's quite commendable as well. And I have a question about that, just, so we've been talking a lot about the letters training and the Read Act, and you mentioned the core phonics, and I'm wondering how those all relate together? And then also if you think that this additional change in instruction and approaches had a significant impact on the reading scores? Because you said that cohort especially, their change was remarkable.
Right, yes. And so I do believe that the Read Act and the Science of Reading training, you know, being a required component is a direct result of people seeing those results with students and wanting to make sure that all students, that equity piece, all students have that Science of Reading-informed curriculum. And so the structured phonics does just that, and it ties in really nicely, and teachers are seeing those connections between the letters training and then what the curriculum offers. So that is, you know, one part of the success, I believe, and we're going to continue to learn more about that. When I meet with teachers and day-to-day conversations that are happening as teachers are looking at the data, they really are, you know, well-versed in what might be getting in the way of a student reading at grade level and where we would want them to be because of that training, and they share with each other ideas for how to approach that, so.
Right. I'm going to get really basic for me right now. So can you just tell me the relationship between core phonics, letters, and the science of reading?
Okay, so the science of reading would be probably your overarching concept of research that's been done to figure out the best way to help students read effectively by the time they finish their elementary school. The letters training was a specific curriculum that was used with teachers. I took, and Principal Antoine, we took letters training for administrators that had a little different angle, but it was really helping to build a foundation of knowledge. And then the curriculum, the core phonics, is an actual curriculum that you purchase, and then it has structured lessons that you would implement based on the same types of things you learned in the letters training and the overarching science of reading. Did I get it?
Very helpful, yes, thank you.
Hey, Ben?
God, thanks, appreciate it, and thanks for defining a few of those acronyms for us. It's always helpful for
There's a lot, we have a lot.
Exactly, no, it's definitely helpful. Sorry, Sam. The, just to follow up on Amy's question in terms of letters training, what's the kind of trajectory there in terms of getting all of the teachers, you know, fully trained in that? What's the timeline that you're looking at right now?
So I believe, and Dr. Hellman can share with me if there's more or different information, but I believe that this year, we were able, at the elementary level, to look at those teachers who do teach reading, and that's both general ed and special education teachers. The teachers who had already completed the letters training, and there was some forward thinking by our district that allowed us to do more training than some districts had done. We were able to have a large percentage of our teachers already completed with that required training, and I believe this year will then help complete the training for those who were required and had not had that yet. Is that accurate, Dr. Hellman?
Yes, so just to re-ground the board, remember last spring, we had a presentation from Hope Langston about the Read Act, and up until this year, we had a voluntary program for people who wanted to participate in the letters train, Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. We had scores of teachers who participated in that, received a stipend for it, very rigorous training, probably double the amount of time that we actually would have to do it this year. So we've made a shift to one of the other two approved programs from the Minnesota Department of Education. So this year, we have 119 teachers from early ed all the way through fifth grade who are being trained in the Core Learning Online Language and Literacy Academy. Both meet the Science of Reading requirements as presented by the Minnesota Department of Education. And in addition, remember, we have a nationally-trained letters facilitator, Alicia Clary, who also is going to be following up as we move forward with any of the modest differences that we see between the letters and the OLLA program. So this was really a matter of being pragmatic about how much time we had, the choice that we did to embed that training during the school day or in the workday, which is a really important thing. We've talked with a lot of our teachers who have young families who are saying how grateful they are that it is embedded within their workday rather than paying a stipend to do things after school or on the weekends, or in some places where parents are pleased with what we're doing because we're not canceling student days to be able to complete that training. So by the end of the year, we will, there's a required phase of who is trained, and by the end of this year, we will have completed Phase One training as required by the state. The state has not yet given us what the pathway is for the Phase Two training yet.
And then, so would that be, what percentage of our elementary school teachers will then have completed the Phase One training by end of the year?
Everyone.
Everyone, okay.
Everyone who we've hired.
Yeah, and that was my follow-on question, is when we bring someone new into the district, kind of what does that onboarding process look like?
So we are working on that right now. You're in this kind of interesting timeframe because the Read Act also requires Minnesota colleges and universities who grant teaching licenses or who provide the tools to grant to first people to gain teaching licenses to also begin this training. We're going to have this gap right now where if we hire, theoretically, if we hire a teacher from another Minnesota school after this year, elementary teachers, they should already have been trained. Now, let's say that you hire someone who had, for example, a K-8 reading license, and they had been teaching in eighth grade in another district, and we hired them to teach fourth grade. It is possible that they may not yet have the training. So there is some money this year from the state that's very clearly earmarked for additional teacher compensation, which we're working right now with the Northfield Education Association to finalize how that money will be distributed. There is no funding from the state beyond this year. So one thing that we know can be part of it to incentivize is that people could receive graduate credit for taking the training. That is something that could be a financial incentive moving down the line. It is going to shift, what you're going to see is in the next two years or so, you are going to see a shift where the school has been, the district has really been responsible for the training up until this point. It will shift, I'm predicting, two years from now, when, if you have not taken that training yet, it will be on your own. I think there will still be some incentives. I think it could be either local credit, it could be graduate credit. But when you think about over a period of four or five years from the time we started this till that point, there's going to become a point where we say, you know what, we've done everything we can, and if you're hired in the district, you have to commit to taking that training on your own, maybe they'll get some graduate credit, et cetera. So the Read Act is in the messy middle right now. We have a good plan for this year. We have an excellent plan because we are way ahead of the game, frankly. There's a little bit more unknowns as we move ahead. We don't know whether there'll be funding to pay stipends for the teachers who are in Phase Two, middle school and high school teachers who teach English language arts by example down the line. Then if we have people coming from out of state, what are we going to accept as commensurate training, those kinds of things? So right now, very comfortable at the end of this year, our elementary teachers and early ed teachers will be trained, and special education teachers will be trained in Science of Reading, either letters or OLA. And then as we move forward, we will await the next legislative session to determine what other changes might happen.
Thank you. Okay, Ben?
Thanks, Sam. One follow-on question, so you've been in the new Greenville School for a few years now. How would you, how would you compare the differences just from an instructional standpoint, kind of what that new space provides versus, you know, the old Greenville?
Absolutely. So I think, I really feel confident that we met the goals in the collaborative design and building process. So we have really seen the benefits of the natural light, and if you've seen the building, some people compare it to a Star Wars spaceship from above because it zigs and zags a little bit, but that allows almost all of the learning spaces to have natural light and ample natural light. I think the flexibility of space has been huge, and there's just small additions, like having a flexible lab where our school photos are, you know, if we have vision and hearing screening, we don't interrupt other classroom spaces or move PE out on a, you know, a day where it could be tricky to be outside. And then I think the teachers notice, we love the community feel of the 700 Lincoln Parkway building, and so being able to see other classrooms in action, being able to connect quickly with other grade-level classrooms. We have the POD concept, which allows that to happen within the grade-level We have the POD concept, which allows that to happen within the grade-level concept. And then the teachers still have the ability to close the door if there's a large group activity elsewhere, they can close that door. They're still visual where they can see each other and learn from each other. But you can have more space where if sound is an issue to help students, and we all know that even as adults, that that helps us at times to have a more quiet space to learn. So the flexibility of that has been, you know, something that we're really proud of. And the flexible furniture as well has allowed us to make some changes, course correction during the year where we need to move furniture in a certain area or as we reshape how we are programming at the school. Over the summer, you know, the things are on wheels and they're consistent, and so they can move into other spaces. So that's, I think, four really positive things. Yeah, we're really proud of it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else question or comments? Okay, Jeff?
Thanks for your presentation. I have kind of a question.
I'm sorry, thanks for your presentation. I have a question relative to your building, just that I've always wanted, I wanted to ask you recently. In terms of just safe routes to school to and from, with a lot of the changes going across, the new developments across the street, I mean, how do you feel about kids being able to get to school safely and not? Obviously, we're coming into winter and some changes, but you know, it's kind of a new season in that new development coming up, and I just wanted to hear your comments on that.
Absolutely. So the Craywood Building across the street was a really big change to the landscape. And so we have new neighbors this year. We're getting to know our new neighbors. So we did shift one crosswalk closer to the parent and staff drive entrance and kind of in between the bus entrance as well. And so we have a new crosswalk. There are safety beacons that were added and that provide another visual support. And then we've just shifted where we have staff at those key crossing times. We used to cross at Green Meadow further down closer to the NCEC, and now we've moved that crossing. So with the addition of a new sidewalk on the south side of Lincoln Parkway, that allows students to come down to that point. So to date, it's worked really well. And I feel like we still have families and their children able to bike and walk to school right now, so.
Good. Anyone else question or comment? Okay, Amy?
The previous questions may be, think of, in the new building, do you have a sense that there are, there's any effect on behavioral issues or referrals to the office? Are there fewer than you might have had in the old building or?
It's a, that's a tricky question, just with different cohorts of students. So I don't know that. I feel like we are better equipped to support students and that may need a smaller learning space or that may do a better job of learning with the ability to have things be quieter. Or one other component is we do have just a wonderful group of volunteers, tutors, and community members. And so the POD spaces do provide ample space. It feels like there's plenty of space to meet with students. And so that also allows us to provide smaller groups or individual support for students that maybe was a little bit more difficult in narrow hallways before, so.
Anyone else comment or question? All right, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
All right, next we have Bridgewater Elementary School Improvement Showcase. Bridgewater Principal Nancy Antoine, welcome. She will present overview of the board's successes and highlights in the 23-24 year and the focus areas for the new academic year 24-25. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the board and Dr. Hillman for inviting us here tonight. It's nice to have the opportunity to talk to you about what's going on at Bridgewater Elementary. I was going to come up and just say, did out to what Sam said, but I realized that we're not the geckos, sorry. We are the bears, and that's okay, and I don't mind. And I think that Sam did an excellent job, and I hope to do, I hope to do equally as well. So obviously, this is my 18th year at Bridgewater Elementary, and I'm enjoying it. I, of course, I love serving our students, our staff, and our families. That's something that you will, you will never change my mind on that one. That's what I, that's why I get up and go to work every morning. And those partnerships that we have, we talk about, those are, those are so strong. And that, again, even, even this morning, you know, having a parent come and hand me her, hand me her little one that was pitching a fit this morning, and all you got to do is give the child a hug and, and let mom escape quickly. And then, then you start talking, and pretty soon, the smile comes back on her face and she's in class. And that's what we're there for. It's not about judging the parent. In fact, it's just the opposite. As a parent, I know what it's like to have, have those children that pitch a fit first thing in the morning. So you don't let that wreck their day. You, you don't let that wreck the parent's day nor the student's day. You just step in and help wherever and whenever you can. So when we look at the strategic plan, the strategic plan is something, it's basically the roadmap for the work we do each and every single day. When I look at that division statement, preparing every student for lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. And to me, that, that says two things, that they're ready academically and they're also ready socially emotionally. And those two things have to go together, otherwise they're not, the students who are not ready socially emotionally aren't ready for the academics. And so many times, you've got to focus on that piece so that they are ready for the academics. But again, we don't do that alone. And that's what the benchmarks will, will show you here. When we look at the people, we're in the business of people. We're in the business of the people that are, that are our stakeholders, our students, our staff, our families, community members. All of those are the people that we, we're trying to serve. Also, when we look at our learners within our spaces, our learners aren't just just students, our learners are our staff. And as you heard from, from Sam, our teachers are learning the science of reading. They're learning about our new math curriculum. And I would love to have some of that math questions come my way because that is my, that is my area. Many of you know that I'm a licensed secondary math teacher, and so of course I adore math. Equity is something that is always, it always has to be front and center. We want to make sure that every child has an equal opportunity to reach their fullest potential, but also have the opportunity for success. Communication is something that we strive for over and over again. That's what, and it's, it's not just a one-size-fits-all. Yes, we send a newsletter home every week, but it's more than that. It's that taking the time out of your schedule to, to talk with, talk with a parent who may be struggling with, with a certain thing, or talk to a student, you know, to those, when I'm doing my walkthroughs around the building and that student comes in and you just notice that something is off, and you take the time and stop and say, what's going on? Well, I was really sick this weekend. I don't feel very good today. Oh, okay. You know, then, then you, you send them on his merry way down to see the, to see the nurse, but at the same time, then you know what's going on with that child. Because the, the children will tell you what's wrong. They'll tell you what they need. And many that fly to you with that flying hug and nearly knock you over sometimes, it's because they need a hug. And that's okay. I don't, well, usually I don't mind because usually I'm bigger than most of them, so I don't fall over. But some, some I would, some of my fifth graders I worry about a little bit there. Stewardship, obviously, we're going to, we're going to take, take responsibility for all of the resources and finances that we do have. And through our BBC, which is our Bridgewater Booster Club, we have a lot of finances. Last year, our, our Bridgewater Booster Club raised over $70,000. That doesn't happen by accident. It certainly doesn't happen by accident. I'm very proud of that. And yet, at the same time, we also recognize that that can't be a yearly expectation. It has to be something that we take and we show gratitude for, but we use that, we use that money frugally. We don't use it frivolously. As you've seen, if you've driven by Bridgewater, we have, we have a new sign that's out on 246. Thank goodness, because we've had many of the athletic teams from other communities come and they've tried to get in, come in the wrong way, even though it says, do not enter, and there's a great big barricade there, they've still entered that way. So having a, a new Bridgewater sign out on 246 is really nice. They're going to put in the lighting, so it's going to be well lit out there. So I'm hoping for the best there. Partnerships, we have great partnerships, number one, with parents and families. But we also have great partnerships with our high school students and our college students. And I was, I was watching one of our St. Olaf students come in the other day, and he came and came in the building, just, everything's fine. I tell you what, when he left that building, you could see him being, he was on top of Cloud Nine. And I thought, we're on to something here. If all of our college students could spend even a half an hour with elementary school students during the day, can you imagine what, what we could do to their, their own mental health? Can you imagine the impact we could have on that, that late teen, twenty-something depression? I thought, because our kids make, make them feel like they're celebrities. You know, they walk into a classroom and those kids are like, wow, look who's here. And they're so excited about it. And I saw one, one of our former students sitting in here, she's right behind me on my right-hand side here. And again, she knows that feeling as well. She comes by to help with dismissal in the afternoon every single day. Those kids know her. Those kids love her. She comes there and she's part of them because they, they have that connection with them. So when I look at those partnerships, that's all encompassed in, in that piece. Because our, our kids really, they're amazing, but I tell you what, they do so much to help with the, again, those mental health needs, especially our, our college students. And I hope that more of our college students take advantage of that because it is so powerful. Just to see that, that boy walking, or that young man walking out on Cloud Nine that day, it, I mean, my heart was just lifted. And I thought, we are on to something. So yes, I look at all of our benchmarks. Yes, we want our, our students to be academically ready. We want them to be connected to adults and to our community. We want our, we want our staff to, to want to be at, at work. We want them to want to work with our, with our students. We want our parents to be pleased with the outcomes of their educational experience. And that all starts with all of us working together as a team. We can, none of us can do it alone. But it means that, you know, when, when you're out in public, for, for example, as a principal, when I'm out in public, taking the time to stop and talk to people, even if they holler at you in the middle of, of cub, Mrs. Antoine, I'm like, oh, my gosh, where? And then you realize it's, it's just two of your kids, they're shopping with mom. But that's, but they, all they want to know is, do you know me? Do you remember me? Do you know my name? And thank goodness, I have, I have a way of remembering names. I don't know how, don't, don't ask me how, how it is, but I, I do know probably about eighty, eighty-five percent of my students by name. And in, so when they're in the grocery store, you take the time with them, you know, give them, give them that hug. Hey, did you get to help mom today with shopping? And just, you just have those little conversations. But that's what, that's what all those connections are, are about. We have to be part of those connections that the children have because they do need us. So obviously, like Sam said, our school improvement showcase purpose is to share all the success stories that we've had, identify some focus areas that we're going to work on, align, of course, everything is aligned to our district's strategic plan, inspire actions on behalf of others, and align our efforts because we want our students, we want our, our students to be prepared for lifelong success, both academically and socially emotionally. So when I, when I look at our, our site improvement goals from last year, our academic, for our academic goals, for the, for math fact and reading fluency, we're partially met. We continue to work hard to reach more than, to have more than eighty percent of our students meet benchmarks. That's a lofty goal. It's a tough goal, but I tell you, one of the highlights that I wanted to bring up was with our, our third grade MCA results. So third grade in the area of math for last year, eighty percent of them met for proficiency. And this was the third consecutive year that we had an increase in their proficiency rate since COVID. That's pretty amazing. Third grade in reading, we had sixty-seven percent proficiency in that area as well. And again, the, a third year of increase since COVID. I'm really pleased with that. All of our, all of our scores, all from third, fourth, and fifth, all outperform the states, the state data. Obviously, we're going to, we're going to continue looking at our, we want a strong performance in our demographic, demographic data compared with the states. We, ours are good compared to the state, but that's, that's not enough. We still want them better. So that's what we continue to work toward. Our parent and parent engagement and involvement are fantastic. Our parents want to be partners in the educational process. Last year, we did the parent breakfasts. So for each grade level, we had parent breakfasts and inviting parents in. We've done, we have our, in November, we'll have our Veterans Day Assembly again. We always have our Veterans Day Assembly, well-attended. In the spring, we have our, what we call our Apple in a Book Day. It's, it's very simple. We invite parents in to come read with their children, and the co-op donates apples. So we have the parents and children eat an apple and read a book. And it's, like I said, well-attended. Obviously, during our fundraiser, we just, we do booster, the fun run, that's the only fundraiser we do. We have a lot of parents that help out with that. Our Bridgewater Booster Club is, again, when you, when you think, well, parents aren't so as involved, because there's not as many that attend that, that meeting, I say no because that, the attendance comes in other ways. When I look at how our parents are involved, they're there for, their parents are at school for lunch. I swear, sometimes we're going to have to take reservations because we have that many parents coming in wanting to eat school lunch with their children. Last, last Friday, one of the dads said, oh, my goodness, that shrimp, that shrimp dinner, lunch was really good. Yep, that's right. So we do have a lot of parents that come in, and we want them to be part of our educational process because the more they are involved, the more help we get, that we get. So they're excellent partners. Last year, we did have families that expressed a desire to have those in-person family conferences again. And so hopefully, we're going to have a little bit more of that. And then, of course, we've had, last year, we had, we had a lot of our staff attending professional development, learning about our indigenous populations and other way, other ways to be inclusive of all of our students. And that particular professional development opportunity with the, oh, gosh, I'm drawing a blank on the name, Ned Dyerson, Dryson, they were there and they did an excellent job of promoting different ways that we can work with our indigenous populations and different things that we need to be aware of. So one of our highlights was our structured phonics and our Core 95 phonics program. Obviously, our, our teachers at grades K through three are using their structured phonics program. And in grades four and five, they're using the Core 95 program. And again, what the teachers have said is that it's, especially with the fourth and fifth graders, it's really helping to fill in the gaps of where the students have learning gaps in the area of reading. So really helping them to solidify their reading, their, their reading strategies and learn how to read. And that's the big piece in that. And the structured phonics, especially with, when you start at that in kindergarten, all of those, all that language, all the skills that they're learning, the strategies that you're using, those then carry on. So I know that, for example, in fifth grade this year, the teachers are talking about how much easier it is because the students have the language already. So that's been, that's been amazing. And so, and I've listened also how that connects to their benchmarks and the strategic commitments. Because of course, if we don't teach our children how to read by the time they leave third grade, we know how much more difficult it gets. And reading is one of those areas, and you know, I talked to the staff about it many times about the fact that teaching students to read isn't just some pie in the sky thing. This is so important because it can be a matter of life or death for our students after they graduate from high school. Children who don't know, know how to read become adults who don't know how to read. And adults who don't, don't know how to read, they, they don't have the same access to the American dream that everyone else has. And we know that. We also know that our prisons are, are filled with people who are illiterate. And that's just a shame. If we can impact that now, let's do it. Next one is the social emotional learning. Obviously, the number, our number of discipline referrals are decreasing as students increase their understanding and modeling of our four Bridgewater rules. And even the kindergartners can tell you what our rules are. You ask them, what are the four rules? Be respectful, be responsible, be safe, and try your best. And so when, when, when you find a child that's making a poor choice, just ask him, you know, which rule aren't you following? I'm not being safe today. Yet you're correct. How can you change that? You know, asking them how to change it, because I can tell you how to change it, but unless you, unless that comes, becomes intrinsic, it's not going to change. So the kids do know that. We do morning announcements every single morning in which our behavior coach, Adam Danielson, talks to the, talks to the students every single day about, okay, here's our, this is our character trait for the, for the month. But also, he's telling them, this is how you can show that as a student. This is how you can show your respect for other people. And he talks about, you know, when you're in the cafeteria and you get your lunch from our food service staff, making sure you say thank you. Just those little things. And, you know, talking to them about, you know, holding a door open for somebody else, thanking, thanking your teacher every now and then, thanking your parents at home every now and then. So we, we want those character traits to become something that's embedded within them and something that they try, that they truly try hard to do. So again, that's connected to, we want our students to exhibit physical, social, and emotional well-being. All of our students have it, and we want our students to have a connection with a caring adult beyond their parents. I think that's really important, that we all, we all know that children learn best when they feel that connection to their teacher and connection to other adults in the building. teacher and connection to other adults in the building. And when they can see you as a safe person, even the little kindergartners, when they can see you as that safe person that they can come to, that's when we're, that's when we start winning. Obviously, we have our Bridges, Bridges Math Pilot. And the, the teachers have done an outstanding job of that. And when you talk about, you know, the, what, what ways have we seen this work? I observed a lesson in what the teacher was using number corner the other day. And she had little different figures that stood for each of different amounts. And so the students had to tell them, what is that exact amount that she had displayed there? And soon, the kids came up with it. It was fifty-four. And then she had them tell them, okay, so if you have fifty-four inches, tell me how many feet that is, tell me how many yards that is. And, you know, and the kids were, these were fourth graders, they were coming up with that so quickly. I'm like, that's, this is the beauty of that program. They have that mental math and they have that image in their head already. What is that? And that, I mean, of course, I was excited as a math person. I was pretty giddy. And every day, she adds a, adds another six inches to her measurement at the bottom of the, her number corner wall and then asking the kids, you know, how much, how much is that? Again, how many inches is that? How many feet is that? How many yards is that? You know, because we want our, we want, we want our kids to have that opportunity to be the next architects of the, of the world, you know? They can, they can build houses. They can, they can build anything. So if they can think mathematically, they can, they can build things or they can create things, you know? Most of you know I'm a quilter. I need to use my mouth when I'm, when I'm doing my quilting. It doesn't just happen by itself. If I don't, if I don't measure correctly, something's off and it doesn't end up being a quilted, maybe a scarf. And I don't need a scarf anymore. All right, focus areas. Obviously, we're, we're focusing this year on the Bridges implementation. And we're doing that with our consistent professional development and of course, support. We want our students to be successful in, at grade level, grade level math. When I look at the professional development, the instructional services department is coming around to each of the building, each of the buildings to provide professional development in the area of math at least once a month. And so ours is actually taking place this Thursday, our first one. And so we want all the teachers to have the support that they need so that they're able to teach this program. And I think that's really important. It's not a matter of just saying, here, here's your curriculum. Excuse me. We have to give them their curriculum, but we also have to teach them how to use it. And that, that piece is huge. Excuse me. The next one is the science of reading. So as Sam had mentioned, our teachers have been trained in, many of our teachers have been trained in letters. A huge segment of my special education population, the teachers have been trained in letters. And now with their, with the Ola training this year, hopefully, we'll have all of our teachers trained, trained in the science of reading, which I think is so important. I'm going to grab a little water here, just a moment, please. Everyone deserves a colleague like Sam around. I just think that the, the science of reading is, is, has been really powerful. I enjoyed it, the training that I took myself, because it gets, it gets down to the why with the reading. Why are, why are we doing certain things? And when the teachers learn that, learn those, those strategies, then they can impart that to the students so that our students can become better readers and they know why their, why the, why the rules are with certain words, that I before E is except after C. They know why that's, that's happening. So I really, I'm looking forward to seeing all of our teachers at the end of that training because, again, I really feel that reading is, is just that important. And our, our other focus area is that welcoming inclusion and belonging. And this one is really, this one is so really close to my heart. So as I put there, the, through our second step SEL program and positive greetings at the door, we want all of our students to feel that they're welcome, included, and belong at Bridgewater. We also want all staff, students, and families to feel welcome at Bridgewater. They all belong there because it is their school. I remind them of that all the time. You know, and I've asked the kids, whose school is this? Well, it's yours. Nope, it's not my school. What's the superintendent's? Like, no, it's not his either. I said, it belongs to the taxpayers. And those are your moms and dads in our community. And, and I want them to know that it is your school. So if you have suggestions and comments, you can share comments and suggestions at your school. And so if they've got great ideas, you implement them. Because we can only, we, you only have one mind and you go, well, we should only have one mind. But if I start, you know, and if I can't think of certain ideas, bring, bring them on. If I, and I, if I can implement them, so be it. Just like when we implemented the change in the, the driving pattern coming into Bridgewater and leaving Bridgewater. That wasn't, that was not my idea. However, what a great idea it was, because now we no longer have traffic stacked up onto Jefferson Parkway. We have enough room up on two forty-six. We don't have to worry about that. We have additional traffic that's there this year. And of course, we have, we had road construction all summer too. That was really fun for the delivery guys, but we, we got through it. That roundabout that's on two forty-six and Jefferson Parkway has been a tremendous help. I'm very pleased with that. So that's, that's really some of the things that, that we have that we're really pleased with. Again, that welcoming inclusion and belonging, it's got to be at the, the foundation of everything we do because if we don't include all of our students, which one are we going to miss? I don't want to pick that one because I don't want to miss any of my kids. Making sure that people are welcome and they know that they belong here. And day one of school is always my favorite day. And it's because I want to make sure that all the kids know that they belong here. And again, calling them by name is such a great way of reminding kids that, yes, you do belong here. You're, you're one of my kids. And if they don't, if I, if I can't, if I can't speak the same language that they do, that's my fault, not my problem and not theirs. I need to go find someone to help me, not help them. So that's what's going on at Bridgewater. Like I said, we're having, we're having a great time. But it's really nice to be able to, to do a lot of partnering with, with my other administrative colleagues like Sam and Tanya. It's been very, very nice to be able to work hand in hand with them. Any questions that you may have?
Thank you, Nancy. Excellent, excellent presentation. I always love hearing about the culture that you build at Bridgewater.
Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Rob?
Thanks for your presentation.
Absolutely.
I'm wondering with the Bridges math curriculum, if you're seeing like more, a different attitude toward the math lessons, like more enthusiasm or, because part of it, we talked about this when, when Ray was here, Ray and Hope were here about creating a positive math identity and whether you, if you've started to see any of that happen.
Well, and I have because of the fact that we had teachers that piloted the program last year. And so what I saw was a greater participation in the math lessons. And so they, and their math vocabulary was expanding. And so that's what I'm hoping to see within, within the K through five setting is, is that math vocabulary expanding because I did see it in the classrooms that I, that I was in. Because it's, you know, it's one thing to know that, okay, and you know, hearing them say one plus one, well, you know, it's not really, that's not, that's not really what it is. Okay, we're, we're combining two entities and now, now what's your total? What, what's the, what's the combination? Thank you.
Anyone else comment or question? Okay, Ben?
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Quick question. That's a phenomenal amount of community support for the Booster Club, seventy thousand. So what, what kind of things does that support at the school?
It supports a lot of different things. One of the things that they do is they, they give a, they give a portion back to the classroom teachers. And that goes, obviously, to the, to the things that are purchased within the classroom. So for example, this year, every teacher gets twenty-five dollars per student. And so they can use that to support, to support the instruction in their classroom. So it doesn't mean that they're going out and purchasing a curriculum for, for that specific teacher. No, it means we're, we're looking at different, the different materials that they can, they can provide there. One of the other things they've done is they, they put in an outdoor learning classroom. So if you look at, you look at the front of Bridgewater and you look to the right, there's an outdoor learning classroom that has umbrellas over the tables. And they're looking at putting electricity out there so they can run their iPads out there. And also having a little fenced area around there to make sure that it's, it's kind of set off by itself. So those are some of the different things. One of the initial projects that, that our Bridgewater Booster Club did was they built the, the newest playground equipment that we have. So they, like I said, it's, it's a lot of, it's a, it's a lot of money that they're spending just to ensure that our, our school is a better place for the students.
That's great, that. That's phenomenal support from the community.
Absolutely.
You said you wanted a question on math.
Sure.
So the, the teachers that are piloting the Bridges curriculum are those that have already completed the letters training. Is that right? Did I get that right? Or am I, am I making that up?
No, it, it isn't. The ones who piloted, they piloted the program last year, but they're, some of them, some of them have been letters trained already. Some of them are attending the, the Ola training this year. But they have, they were the ones that chose to pilot the Bridges math program last year so that by the end of the year, that they were the ones that helped make the decision as to which math program that we went with for this year.
And can I just follow up on that too? Just, I think what you heard, Dr. Miller, is that the people who piloted Bridges last year helped inform the implementation across all elementary classrooms this year. Those who completed letters are not doing the OLLA training because they've already been trained. So those are the folks who are actually spending some more time further developing the Bridges implementation. That's a fair way to say it.
Uh huh.
Gotcha, okay. Thanks for that clarification. So just with all the, I guess, a general question with all the new curriculum that's out there, have you had any feedback or what are you observing in terms of, you know, the teachers being able to kind of absorb and bring that back to the classroom?
It's a, it's a heavy lift. I won't, I won't lie to you. It's a heavy lift, but at the same time, the teachers understand the benefit of that. And that's, that's due to the, the information that they receive from the people who piloted the program. And so they, they, they know where, they, they know where they're going. They, they know what's at the end of that rainbow. But at the same time, they all, they also know it's, it's a lot of learning and they have to put in the time to, to put their lessons together right now. And so, yeah, it is, it is a lot of work, but at the same time, I think they know that when we get, when we get to the end of the road, they're going to be very happy about it.
Yeah, well, thanks for your leadership and support for them. I always tell the students, both you and Sam.
Thank you.
Corey, you had a question? Okay, I'm calling on Corey and then I'll call on Amy.
Hi, Nancy. Nice to see you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Ben took my math question since you teed it up for us, but I've got another question for you. So obviously, the three focus areas are tremendous and worthy of attention. But for you, what's a goal for your building this year that you want to achieve, whether it be with staff or students or the whole community?
I think, I think my biggest goal is to make sure that we're working in tandem with each other, that we're, we're not missing out on opportunities for partnerships. And so part of that comes down to, you know, the communication that we have with parents. If parents know what's going on in our building, they're more apt to attend those, those events. And that's, that's on me to do that communication piece. I want, I want our, I want our kids to feel like, feel like they belong there so that they are ready to learn. And then once, once they, once they start learning, they can fly. And that's what I want them to do. I, I want, my, my biggest goal is to ensure that we build good citizens of our community. And like I said, when, when our kids are ready to learn, they can do anything that they want. And it's, it's fun to listen to all the kids, all the things that the kids talk about wanting to do. And even, even like last Friday, a parent comes in and my, my child wants to play in orchestra. Is it too late? Too late? Nonsense. Well, it's not too late. So we, you know, we, that very day, we send her home with a violin. And that's, that's what I want is every kid to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Amy?
Well, Nancy, thank you for your presentation. And I have to say, I love your passion and enthusiasm, especially after being at Bridgewater for eighteen years, that you're still at this level of engagement. So thank you for being one of our principals.
Absolutely.
Okay, I have two questions for you. I just wanted to sort of expand on the question about how the teachers are being trained. So the teachers who are now doing the Ola training, are they going to be learning Bridges next year then? Is it like?
Oh, no. No, they're, they're learning both at the same time.
At the same time.
Yeah, the Ola training is taking place on Wednesday mornings. And like our professional development with, with the Bridges math program is taking place on Thursday morning. So they, they'll, they'll be attending both because they are teaching, they're teaching the, the math curriculum that's there, that's not connected to the Ola training or letters.
I can see why you're saying it was a heavy lift then.
Yes.
That's a lot at one time.
Yes, ma'am.
And a classroom of kids.
Correct. Especially with, we've got some, we've got some large classrooms. We've got, you know, our fourth grade classrooms are, are, all but one are at twenty-eight. And our fifth grade classrooms are all, all but, all but the compañeros classroom are, are at that twenty-eight size. So it's, it's not easy.
So I have another question, but first I want to congratulate you on having your third grade being eighty percent proficient in math and having increased in the third grade scores year after year after year. That's again, a huge accomplishment. So congratulations on that. And now I, I think my question is actually more for Superintendent Hillman, sort of related to that. So I really appreciate this showcasing of the schools and going through the highlights and focusing on the great things that are happening because we have lots of wins going on. So this is all great, but I also wonder about a lot, a lot of news lately has been in the MCA scores and how poorly Minnesota students overall are doing. And so I worry that when people look at this, they might think we're trying to hide something, you know, because we're not going through all of the scores one by one and looking at them. And I was just wondering if you could respond to that?
Well, yes, I will absolutely respond to that. And of course, we have an annual method of hardwiring how we share MCA results with you. You're right, in the past, the previous school improvement reporting process included frankly, just a little bit more data. I think you heard actually quite a bit of data tonight from Sam and Nancy, more than what they were required to provide. We did change from school improvement reporting to school improvement showcases this year because of what you've heard of that lift between the Ola training and the math, new math adoption. So that PLC time, the time when PLCs and grade levels really worked on those annual goals that they set that really revolved around a number of student achievement metrics, we just don't have that same opportunity this year. So you're seeing the improvement reports a little bit differently. You will see a report, a detailed report twice in the next coming months. One will specifically be around our test score performance. Hope Langston will help us with that as we normally do. And then you also have the new civic and career readiness report, the former world's best workforce report that we're required to provide an annual hearing on. So board members will get two shots at hearing detailed information about our state test scores in the coming months, both from the MCA perspective. You'll also hear things about the ACT and some of those other benchmarks that we have used. In addition, in the next couple of months, you'll be hearing from us about a plan to really think about a mid-course consideration of our benchmarks. We have eleven benchmarks that were adopted with our strategic plan in two thousand and twenty-two. This is the middle part of that strategic plan. The goal is to go out to two thousand and twenty-seven. We will be convening groups of people this year to take a look at our benchmarks. Do we need to consolidate? Are there ones that we are missing, things like that? We're going to use things like Norfield Forward to discuss that this year. And then we're going to ask you to help us. What would you like to see for school improvement reporting? Again, starting next year, we had this chance to do the school improvement showcase and then be rethinking about what is the best way to report success and areas of focus then be rethinking about what is the best way to report success and areas of focus related to what you've heard in the real day-to-day activities of students at school, the teacher's experience, the family's experience, and of course, the learner outcomes or academic results. So you'll be getting a chance to engage in those discussions over the next couple of months, detailed levels of student test data, probably more than you'll want.
Thank you.
And if I may address that question as well? Many of the times we, we do talk about the data, but I would, and I think that's important. I also think it's also important to realize that our students are more than just a set of data. They, they bring so much more to the table and it's been really nice to talk about some of the other little things that we do on a regular basis. I mean, if you, if you, if you saw, if you saw me last week, you, you would know that yes, I do the gritty down the hallway with a kid who was stuck in a truck and wasn't going to get out and come to school. But just because I was going to do the gritty with him down the hallway, he came to school. And we, you're, you're going to see the little, just, just the little things that we do that, yes, I raced a kindergartner to the door because he was stuck and he wasn't going to come to school that day. And but those, that's, those are the things that, that I want you to hear about as well, not just the data, because our kids are so much more than that.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Event.
Okay, Rob?
No, I won't do the gritty in here.
Maybe I was thinking of this because we had the FFA students here earlier and I remember walking by Bridgewater and seeing tractors and sheep and, and I'm wondering what goes on around that. Is there educa, is there agricultural, agricultural education going on in the elementary schools?
Absolutely. And this is, this was brought in by Tiffany Courtbine, a teacher from Greenville Park. And she'd asked if she could do an ag day at each of the buildings. And we just happened to say yes. And so they brought in, they brought in animals that day. They brought in different, different equipment. And then they did some, they did presentations to the students and they talked to the, talked to the students about the animals and talked to the kids about showing the animals, things of that nature and caring for the animals, which I thought was great. One of the days that you may have seen a big piece of the equipment was because we had a former Bridgewater student that drove up in her own dump truck and showed the kids her dump truck. And so, you know, when you got a, when you've got a dump truck with Malika tiling on the side and you can drive that dump truck, yes, she does a great job of doing that. I've seen her many times drive down the road in a combine. It's great. So yeah, it's really neat when the kids can see that, yes, you could, you can become and do anything that you put your heart to. And I think that the whole ag piece is really important as, as a former farm girl.
Cory, did you have a question?
Yeah. For my colleagues on the board, can you explain what the gritty is?
Sure. If you're watching the, if you're watching the Minnesota Vikings play and you know when Justin, Justin Jefferson scores a touchdown, he does the gritty. So you'll have to watch the, watch the Vikings play next week and you, you can see Justin Jefferson do the gritty. He does it far better than I am, than I do, but I, I think he's a year or two younger than me.
Good. All right. Any more comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're on to item D, which is our Fall 2024 Bond Referendum. Superintendent Hillman will update the board on the bond referendum informational campaign and highlight some upcoming events. Hillman?
Yes, just following the standard report that we've done for the last several meetings, we now are up to a total of 77 events that have been completed to inform the community about the referendum. So that's been 77 opportunities for people to engage with us and either gaining information, asking questions. Almost all of our events are interactive. Since the last time that we met 14 days ago, we've had eight events. That includes two high school tours that were open to the public, one special tour for the class of 2004. As you've heard, we had the student forum conducted by the District Youth Council. We had tabling events at the Hispanic Heritage Celebration and the Community Education Youth Flag Football Evening a week ago tonight. And then we did have a unique tour, the side-by-side tour of the Norfield Community Education Center and Greenville Park. We had five people for that tour, showing people what the NCEC looks like and then comparing that to the newer constructed Greenville Park Elementary. We had some really good feedback from that. So those are including, we also did a Spring Creek PTO presentation. Upcoming events, we have, we'll be tabling at the Greenville Park PTO fundraiser this Friday. On October 2nd, Val Murdoof and Hope Langston will be presenting a combination of some academic updates and the bond reform to the Norfield Area Interfaith Association. So that's the professional organization for local pastors that'll be at the First United Church of Christ. We will have another NHS tour, we'll also have some other tabling. And then we will have our first, on October 8th, we'll have our first bond reform Q and A opportunity at the auditorium in the high school. That's from 7:00 to 8:15 PM. Again, that is more of a traditional public meeting. What we'll be doing is providing a brief presentation, a condensed version of the presentation that we typically give, anticipating about an hour for questions and answers from stakeholders from within the school district. And so more of your traditional piece of, whether it's the first of two, the second one will be on October 22nd. We have our latest tax impact calculator data updates. So to date, we have had 277 total website calculations for people checking what their individual property tax impact would be. 256 of those calculations have been residential, 21 commercial. We're still at one individualized agriculture request. So people are certainly making use of that online tax impact calculator. We're also doing the final edits as we speak on the bond reform guide. The bond reform guide will be mailed to families. We anticipate it being mailed probably early next week. And that will go to every postal patron in the school district. And sometimes even people out, just slightly outside the school district receive that because it's actually less expensive to deliver, finish delivering an entire mail route, even if some of the people might be part of another district. So we might have some folks who are, you know, in the Tri-City United District who might get that because they're on the same mail route as people in the Norfield schools. It's less expensive to do it that way. So you'll be able to see that probably in homes next week. We want to remind people that early voting began on September 20th and so encourage people to check their county website for additional information. There's a lot of opportunities for early voting. Please take advantage of it. I want to invite Dr. Hardy, if he wants to share any comments too. Dr. Hardy and I attended a public accuracy test at Rice County last Thursday. What we witnessed is the public accuracy test for the assistive voting technology. So it's the opportunity for people who need additional assistance to be able to cast their ballot. And so Rob and I had a chance to, there are probably, I would say about 20 people there, Rob. And the Rice County election administrator modeled and demonstrated how a person who needed that assistive voting technology could get the ballot. Two election judges need to sign it to be able to use it. The person then scans a code and basically the assistive technology just becomes a reader for that ballot. There's a variety of different ways that people can mark the ballot. There's a number of different contrast opportunities. So if a person has a visual impairment, they can reverse it towards white text on a black background. There's yellow text on a black background. There's white, you know, a white background with black text. There is audio support in which you can actually make the person's voice who's reading the ballot to faster or slower. Really impressive technology, never connected to the internet standalone machine. They have enough in reserve, 10% of the machines in reserve, and they can get a replacement reader to any precinct in the county, they said, within, within one hour, I believe they said. And then what happens is that they actually then take the ballot and they put it into a printer. And the printer serves basically, if you can think of it as the pencil or the pen, if you will, probably the pen, to be very clear, the pen for the people who are casting that. And then that ballot, once it's marked, then it goes into the regular reader machine. So it was very interesting, Rob and I had a chance to observe that. Any comments you want to make about it, Rob?
I would just say I was very impressed by the professionalism of the staff, how great they were. They just knew obviously so much about, and were able to communicate how the election works. And we have, I guess, the longest ballot in the state this fall. So there was a lot of work getting everything onto one 17-inch sheet, front and back. I mean, I guess they said they were thinking it might have to go to two pages and they worked very hard to get it onto one page. So a lot of work goes into that. And I think it was actually 20 minutes, they said, they could get the backup.
Yes, I think you're right. So that is one of the two public accuracy tests that Rice County will conduct. There's another one coming up in October and Anita and Val are going to attend that on behalf of the district, just to be there and hear from people. We get a chance to hear from election judges and see the friends and neighbors who are going to be helping administer the election. So we would just want board members to know that we're engaged in that and that we are part of that with, with Rice County. We're not going to do the same thing with Dakota or Goodhue County, but Rice County is where most of our voters are. And then finally, I just want to call attention that tomorrow morning, President Allison Byerly will be joining me on KYMN Radio during my regular segment, just to reinforce and talk about the $2 million pledge that Carlton has made to give to the district should, for the facility improvements that are including question one, should it pass? So we've been working to, to get President Byerly to join me on the radio, to really talk about Carlton's commitment and the altruistic rationale that they have for making this pledge. And so I invite you and other community members to listen to us, KYMN Radio, that is 95.1, the one, at about 7:20 AM. Did I get that right, Logan?
It's not how I would say it.
Okay, well, you are the professional. So that is your referendum report for this evening. I'd stand for any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Well done, getting the community informed. They've had lots of great, excellent opportunities, I should say, to learn about the referendum. So I appreciate you getting out there.
Yep, it's our pleasure.
Robert, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Hey, Ben?
One comment, one question. I voted early today in City Hall and it was a very full ballot. I'm impressed that we were able to get all of the questions and offices on that front and back. So good exercise. Question, you know, I think I had a chance to watch the forum that was held this last Saturday online, the replay. So I'm glad that's a resource that's out there and encourage folks to go do that. That includes some of our local offices. I think one of the things that I came away with was that there may be some misconceptions about the way that the referendum questions are structured on the current ballot. Can you just remind us, Matt, the process that that went through to get on the ballot?
Oh, to arrive at the ballot? Yeah, sure. So of course, I won't, you, people in this room know what we started with. We have begun this discussion a couple of years ago, really in earnest since last October or so. The board considered a variety of different things, debated a number of options. The board chose to move forward with a set of questions. So how is, how it's determined in terms of you're asking, make sure I understand, you're asking how we arrived at the questions or why they are sequenced in the order that they are?
Or more, I think, once the boards, you know, arrived and approved that language, what, what were the steps that it went through to get on the ballot?
So once the board determines the direction, we work with a bond attorney. So we have worked with Dorsey and Whitney and they help us take what you have approved and put it into the language that they know meets the requirements for the ballot. Then the board approved the language that was on the ballot. We submit it to the county auditors. The county auditors take that, they put it on the ballots themselves. We then, Val, I and Anita, very, in a very detailed fashion, we reviewed every single precinct ballot in the entire district, 17 or something like that. Don't quote me on that. It's quite a few. So we went through every single ballot to proof and to make sure it was exactly correct, which we did. And we, that's part of the process that should give people a lot of confidence that we were able to make some modest corrections. And we also got to learn that in some precincts, question, all questions will be on one side of the ballot. In some precincts, question one might be on one side of the ballot, question two and three on the other. And some questions, one and two on one side of the ballot, question three on the other, because it depends on how many offices there are. So we proved every single one of those. So that's the process of going from, well, you said, here's the direction, then we take that and we use the bond attorney. Then what we use from there is we send that to the county auditors. The county auditors validate and make sure that it's, they print a, or they give us a draft ballot. We look at that ballot, we help validate it for our elections. That was, by the way, both the board election and the special election for the three bond questions. And then it gets to the ballot from there. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, so that goes through separate, a couple independent review processes.
Yes.
What I'm hearing. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. No, that was, that was helpful. I appreciate that.
Very good. Okay, Amy?
Along a similar vein, I think there's some misinformation out there about what types of questions can be put on there and how you can build off of a question. And I was wondering, because I know people talked about, why don't we have the least expensive option and then build up from there so people can choose?
Right.
And so it might be nice to have that clarified.
Yeah, so you are able to build off your, you can start with one question and then you can add to it. So you can say, and I'm just going to use round numbers right now, you can say, we want $10 million from the public to do this particular project. And then you can say, if question one passes, we want another $10 million to do this project. It has to build up. So you aren't allowed, there's a 1960s court case in Minnesota that prevents school districts from providing what you would consider choice on the ballot. So by way of example, if you were to have suggested, if, if you were in question one, were to do, I'm going to use, I'm just going to use the example, if you were to do renovation or general renovation, general repair with question one, and then question two were to go further, say that question two were to go further to what our current question one is, that includes some renovation, but it also includes some demolition. What the lawyers will tell you is that once you've passed question one and you say you're going to renovate certain spaces, that you're not allowed then in question two to demolish those renovated spaces, if that makes sense. That's, that's where it gets tricky. So when we look at this with bond attorneys and we looked at this a number of different ways, and frankly, this is an area that, and Amy, you can attest to this, because I think it's going to take me 10 years, but we're going to get the law changed. Because I do think if you can build up in the current system, that you should also be able to go backwards in terms of saying, offering a more expensive option one, and then saying, if that doesn't pass, question two, would you approve something of a lesser value? Because the election, in my opinion, right now is an inefficient way and it's an antiquated system based on a time where you weren't able to directly and routinely communicate with voters. So our system is based upon a 1960s court case that prevents from giving the kind of choice that I think many reasonable people would say would be appropriate today. So you were in the meeting with me, Amy, when we met with Representative Brussell, who is on the Finance, Education Finance Committee and the Elections Committee, both of which I think would need to hear this. And we're going to keep working to see if we can get legislation drafted to update and modernize this law. In the absence of that modernization, we have to follow with what the bond attorneys say to us. We do not want to put our community in any kind of position where if we were to put something on the ballot, then then could be challenged later on, that is a waste of time for everybody, right? We want to make sure that we do things that we know are defendable, that have integrity and meet what the current law is. So as much as we would have loved, in fact, we talked about a number of different ways we could potentially structure bond questions that would have provided what people would have considered a choice, we just aren't able to do it.
Thank you.
I ask you to join me in helping change the law, because I think we can change the law. It's going to take a decade, but we'll do it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, very good. We'll move on to item six, which is our consent agenda. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Rob, second. By Ben, thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. Okay, item seven is our items for individual action. We have three items. Board members, please remember to vote into your mic. Make sure it's turned on. And if Anita, you aren't able to hear all the votes, let me know and I'll ask for a roll call vote. The first item is our LMR media contract. I'll take a motion first and then we can discuss. Is there a motion to approve the LMR media contract for the timeframe, September 1, 24, 2024 through August 31, 2029, as presented?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Cory, second.
Second.
Second by Rob, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Any questions or comments? Okay, Amy?
I think this might be a question for Lance. I'm, I'm still wondering if there's any further consideration giving, given to switching the, what sign goes on top and what sign goes on bottom, on the bottom. And I know you said last time, the conceptual, concept that you showed us was not completely accurate size-wise, but I was concerned about Raiders, to me, should go on the top.
Yeah, it was, it was a concept that we'd put together. And we talked with NCC, we talked with each of the contractors actually that came out and took a look at that. And I told every single one of them that, that, that that concept, the way it sits is not realistic. That railing up there is not designed to pull, it's not going to take any kind of a wind load. I wouldn't, I don't even know if I would put a screening on it, just because I'm afraid of it turning into a sale. I talked with the president of NCC Builders today again about it and neither one of us have really put any due diligence into that sign up there at all. We're more focused on getting the windows and the rotting windows out of there and the floor and the doors and stuff like that fixed. Of course, they are paying, you know, $5,000 a year, so they would like some name recognition on it, on the exterior. Um, but uh, you know, they're excited about being a community partner and partnering with the school district and getting that thing fixed up with, again, with some windows so we can see out of them and, you know, just getting it in good condition. Um, he hasn't spent even a few minutes, other than when him and I have been in there looking at other things. And we went up there initially and looked at, you know, there needs some electrical work and some other things done. But um, yeah, I, we're not, we're not sure what, you know, they're not concerned about being more prevalent or, they're, they're excited about being a partner.
Okay, that's, I know you're in the process. I think it's great to get this box fixed.
Yeah.
And then just as long as you're thinking of that as you're designing it and know that, you know, Raiders should get the uh.
Yeah, uh John Mahal, I think, does a great job of keeping me in that frame of mind when I'm talking with him and I meet with Val and Mahal monthly. Um, and each of the, I didn't show some of those other concepts with the dugouts and things, like on the varsity baseball field, I would say is probably actually going to be the most visual. Um, in that, in that example there, we're going to either allow the dugout or the back of the bleachers to be branded with a business and then the other one would be school branded. Um, so we're always thinking about, you know, home of the Northfield Raiders, baseball or football or what have you. So um, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and Matt, you want to make?
Yeah, I just want to make one clarify. I really appreciate that question, Amy, but I just want to also clarify that the bulk of that question is for the next agenda item. Because this is about the overall LMR contract right now, just the sales cut. Now, the NCC contract is coming up, so we've been ahead. I just want to clarify for everybody that that one is going to be the next item on the agenda. So we, we've prota, proactively taken care of it, just for everybody to make sure they're on the same page.
And then Jeff, did you have a question?
Yeah, Lance, thanks for all your work on this. I think you're kind of, um, you know, all kind of playing entrepreneur and trying to move towards positive results and, and, you know, be very collaborative, which is, you know, obvious. And I, I think that being a, I don't know, um, Raider sports guy, um, was captain of the football team back in the day and very long history that I know of, the school district. Um, one thing on the, on the, well, question I had is that, this is, do we, do we call the, the, is it, is it Memorial Field? Or what do we call the?
Memorial Field, yeah.
So I mean, I, I just, I mean, I'm kind of, uh, you know, confused in a sense of if you have your press box or whatever, that you don't have the name of your field on top of that, so.
Right.
You know, that, that to me seems a little bit like common sense. And, and I don't know, I mean, if it, if it is Memorial Field, um, I mean, is that okay that we want to always keep that? I don't even, kind of, I mean, I know that's tradition, but, you know, Raider Field or whatever else, I think that that's something, you know, that'd have to be a board decision, but I, I do think people should know what the name of the field is and that, that should be more prevalent. And yeah, I'm all for construction companies, anybody putting in whatever and figuring that process out. Um, let's see, what other, uh, I think that uh, um, you know, on, on the other signage and different things like that, and I think that, uh, you know, these are public fields, whatever. And I think that as long as we don't, um, you know, we, we want to make that look very professional. And I think that that is your kind of goal and to kind of not make it gaudy and overdo things. So there's kind of a fine mix with that and it would be nice to see that, that there's a little bit of uh, um, you know, eyes and ears on the final product and whatever that decision is, just to know who can actually say that. I kind of like that, kind of don't like that, and I know that that's a work in process. So I mean, you know, with that, I'm going to be, uh, you know, voting yes to this with reservation on some things, but I think that you're, you know, you're working on the process and I think that it's, uh, oh, and one of the main things is where, where, you know, I, I think that, that with this money and funding that you're creating for the district, um, I would hope that it would go for um maintenance and upgrades to sports facilities and specific to the uh sports and activities, you know, bucket. So I don't know how that, that works, but that to me would be kind of a big deal.
Is it okay if I take a little bit of that one? Um, so you kind of had three things in there. So the Memorial Field, um, just so everybody's on the same page, is not currently referenced on the press box at all. Um, so it's not like we're replacing that with NCC Builders, it's, it's not on there at all. It is on the outside when you're coming in, it is very clearly laid out there. Um, and I think the signage will be, um, we'll be happy to share it, like in the board update that Dr. Hillman sends out to make sure that, that everyone's, can see it ahead of time. All of the, to your third point, all of the decisions are approved by um John Mahal and myself before anything's ordered. So there's definitely a process for us to review that and make sure that we're comfortable with it as a district. And anything that we flagged, we would obviously um bring to Dr. Hillman for his, his perspective as well. Um, so I'm not concerned about any of, anything going up that hasn't been reviewed by the district because we're ultimately paying for it and ordering it at the end of the day.
On the signage and gee, maybe I missed that walking in, but is, on the outside, is it same Memorial Field? Okay, uh, so obviously that's good. So I mean, I, I just, um, I mean, I don't maybe even pay attention walking in, looking for that, so that's good.
Probably because it's been there forever, nobody sees it anymore. Um, but it is there and I think it's more about um how we say it when we're announcing and those types of things. Um, it's just going to be more of a recognition piece um than, than necessarily a large signage. Their name will be on it, we'll recognize them when we're talking, but it's still the press box at Memorial Field, home of the Raiders.
Um, and to back that up a little bit, I'd like to say to honor the Memorial Field and with all of the pavers and all of the stuff going in there, there's a lot of money raised, a lot of people to put a lot of heart and soul into that. So I, I mean, I'm all for that and I appreciate that effort.
Yep, absolutely. Um, so those were the points I wanted to make. I don't know if you had any other thoughts or if that answered all your questions, but.
And just one more point, Jeff, your question at the end, where those dollars go.
Oh, yeah.
The board gets to make that decision. So with the point that we're at right now, we have a concept plan, right? Where we're just beginning to sell some of the first pieces. So Val and I in the next couple of months are going to work on a proposal for the board to consider about when we do get that advertising money, where is it located? Where do you want it to go? So Jeff, you brought up that could it go back into a fund that would support, you know, upgrading a facility? That certainly is an option. Um, it doesn't have to be just one option either. You could certainly say direct and say a certain percentage would go uh for this particular purpose. This percentage would go for another purpose. As however the board wants to do it, it's, I think it's our role to bring you a recommendation about how we think you should, that you could think about it. And then you give us feedback on that. And then once you decide, that's how we will allocate the funds.
Yeah, and with that being said, I will be a yes on this vote and it's just that we can be ongoing and, and make good board decisions based on what you're coming up with.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Rob?
Uh, I have a question about the, the contract. Um, there's a long list of services provided.
Yeah.
And since you're kind of going into this as a new thing, there might be new things that you discover along the way. So I'm assuming that's where the amendment part comes in, where it says you can modify or amend the contract. So if it's amended, does that have to come back to the board to approve that amendment to the contract?
Yeah, we would bring it back.
Okay.
Anyone else question or comment? Okay, Ben?
Just a brief comment. Yeah, thanks Lance for partnering with the district on this to find ways to, you know, support our facilities. I was just at the ninth grade football game before coming to the board meeting tonight and that was down at Owatonna, their scoreboard. I took a picture of the score at the time to text to my wife, but I didn't, that, it proved useful in the sense that they've got some advertising, I think seven advertisers on that scoreboard. But you know, the Owatonna Huskies is prominently displayed at the top. So I think there's good examples out there of, you know, what other districts are doing that would serve us well to, to look at some of those as well. Just offer that comment, thank you.
All right, and then, did you have any more comments? Okay, thank you, Lance.
Yep.
All right, um, although we're going to go ahead and do a vote now, we have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion passes. The next item is the NCC Builders contract. I'll take a motion first and then we can discuss. Is there a motion to approve the NCC Builders contract for the timeframe July one, twenty twenty four through June thirty, twenty twenty nine, as presented? Okay, move by Jenny, second, by Ben? Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? All, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion passes, thank you. Okay, our last item is the proposed twenty twenty four payable twenty twenty five preliminary property tax levy. Board members, there are details in the memorandum, which is published on our district website for public viewing. I'm Director of Finance, Val Murdestorf, who will review the levy certification timelines and analysis of the preliminary levy. Um, I will set forward a motion first and then we can have a, a presentation and discussion, okay? I move to certify to county auditor, auditors, the twenty twenty four payable twenty twenty five preliminary levy limitation and certification at the maximum authority as presented. Is there a second? Second, my Corey, okay, Val?
All right, good evening. So I am here to present the preliminary levy certification. This is an annual thing that we do at this meeting every year. It is due to the county uh by September thirtieth. So as you've noted, we're trying to include our vision and strategic commitments and benchmarks in every presentation. Um, and so we are looking to show you how this money helps to support our students. So what is the levy? So the levy provides about twenty seven percent of our general fund budget, which is a very significant percentage. Um, so these dollars really allow us to continue with the programming that we offer. It is um very restrictive. Um, so other government agencies have a lot more latitude than the school district has. Every formula in our levy is either voter approved or state authorized. Um, and you'll see later in the data, about sixty five point seven percent of our levy is voter approved, which um is a pretty amazing place to be considering um the support we have in our community. The Minnesota Department of Education computes all of the levy limits based on um the voter approved limits and the state authorized. Um, and they pull that all together into a lengthy, lengthy document uh with very small font. And we pull that together, um, and so that's where all of this data is provided from. Um, it's all generated off the Minnesota Department of Education. And one of the reasons that we recommend approving at the max, which is the language that they use, rather than a specific dollar amount, is because they're constantly tweaking it right up until the deadline to make sure that all the formulas are accurate and the, um, all the limits are correct. So if we certify a specific dollar amount, we are locked into that number. Um, and should they find that there was some kind of issue, um, doing it to the max allows for all of that cleanup to happen kind of behind the scenes. And that is what we've, how we've certified it um every year that I've been here in my tenure. And really, um, oh, and the debt, uh, debt service. It is also, there's three parts, the general fund, a little bit to support community education, and then our debt service fund, which is all of our bond payments. Um, and so that is, again, statutorily required. And really, it allows the district um to prepare every student. It's a significant portion of our general fund budget. So this is a timeline, um, just to kind of show you how the next couple of months are going to go. So this information um is due to the county auditor um by the thirtieth, and so we'll get that submitted. And the county takes all of those um preliminary levy amounts and then generates the initial tax statements. And so those will go out in November, everybody's pretty used to getting those. Um, and then we will have a final meeting December ninth, where we do our truth and taxation meeting. Uh, we have to talk about the budget, about the levy, um, in some more detail. And that um gets certified and then we provide that final amount. Um, at that meeting, we certify a, a specific dollar amount. And so that you can, um, we can go under what we're going to certify today. Um, but we cannot go over that amount. So again, another reason that the max is an important um tool for us. And then, once we submit that information to the counties, then they prepare the tax statements for the next calendar year. With all things school finance, it's never just straightforward. Um, so a county, the counties have a different fiscal year than the school district. And so they're levying the um amounts between January and December, but our fiscal year starts in July and runs through the following June. So really, the revenue that is going to start being collected in January won't be revenue for the district until the uh twenty five, twenty six school year. So we are putting in lots of estimates in the system for what we think our enrollment's going to be for twenty five, twenty six and all of those things. Um, and that's why they have that three year kind of adjustment period. And we'll talk more about the adjustments when I get to the numbers, but that's why it's, it's really like a five year span from this meeting to when everything is final, final, so. So this year's levy, um, you can see the, the different breakouts. And so the largest portion of it is the referendum. Uh, the general fund's eighteen million, uh, which is about eighty three percent of our total levy. Community ad is about four hundred and twelve, little over four hundred and twelve thousand, and debt service is three point two million. Um, community ad's about two percent and debt service is fifteen percent. So the um pie chart to the right is breaking out just the general fund components. So of that eighteen million, uh, eight point eight is our voter approved operating referendum, which you can see is about forty one percent there. Capital projects levy, um, you might recall, we, the voters approved an increase to that uh in twenty twenty two. So that is a little over two point one million. Uh, that used to be seven hundred and fifty thousand for several years. And then all of the state authorized levies total about seven point two million. So you'll see the pay twenty five levy is uh twenty one million, eight thirty six, nine hundred and sixty three dollars and forty five cents. Again, that is as of last Thursday and as of today, that number's already changed. Um, so instead of a point five percent decrease, right now it's sitting at like a point three two, I think. Um, yep, point three two percent decrease, because there were some fine tuning to the calculations. Um, but it's very similar to um what was presented. And so again, about eighteen, a little over eighteen million for the general fund. Uh, that's a slight decrease. Uh, the one that I ran today shows about a twenty thousand dollar increase for the general funds. That swung a little bit. Um, but again, still showing on overall decrease. Community ad at four hundred and twelve, uh, seven seventy five is a increase over the prior year. It's actually a little bit back to normal. Um, they had some state shifts in the pay twenty four that allowed some previously levy funds to become state aid. And so we saw a little shift there, um, but we are seeing a, an increase in the uh school age care special needs levy, um, that helps support students who are receiving special education services um in our school age care program. And then our debt service, again, that we have five outstanding uh bonds right now, and that's three point two million. And that calculation's very straightforward. We are required by law to levy a hundred and five percent of the total principal and interest payments that are due for the next year. And that's the calculation. And so that's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar decrease over uh pay twenty four. And again, that is due to us paying off um some of the bonds. So overall, half a percent decrease um over the prior year. It'll end up probably being closer to a point three two percent decrease or seventy thousand dollars. We are also required to show um in these other breakouts. So voter approved, you can see is about fourteen point three four five million, uh, which is up about seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars over pay twenty four. That is really the capital projects levy, the voter approved debt and the referendum. Um, so those voter approved pieces. And the operating referendum is up a little bit because we have that inflationary factor included. Um, there's also an increase for the capital projects levy, which I'll talk about um on one of the next slides. And so that's pulling in part of that as well. And then the other is just everything else, all of the state authorized levies. And that went down a little bit, um, mostly due to declining enrollment. Um, but there's some things, we'll talk on the detail slide as well, that'll highlight that. And then also by tax base, so referendum market value, um, you can see is pretty similar and net tax capacity is pretty similar. Um, just a, a slight shift between the two. The referendum market value is really almost exclusively used for calculating the tax base for the operating, the voter approved operating referendum. And then the net tax capacity is for the vast majority of the other calculations. So this slide is a little tiny and hard to see, um, but I wanted to add, there's some pretty big changes this year and so I wanted to add some additional context um to help you understand what the changes are. So um, the, the big difference is, you'll see the capital projects levy is about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars more than the prior year. So if you recall the language that we use for approving that levy, um, is, it's actually a percentage. Um, so if you looked at the ballot language, it's four point seven percent of the district's net tax capacity. So as our net, district's net tax capacity increases year over year, we'll see a bigger increase. Um, it'll increase actually in time with it, because that's how math works. Um, so we'll get four point seven percent of that. And so that was a way to build in sort of some inflation for some of our large capital purchases um for curriculum and technology and things that we're using that for. Um, the prior ten years we had that, it was always seven hundred and fifty thousand. And so every year for ten years, we could do just a little bit less. Um, so this is a way to help maintain some of that purchasing power. The other post employment benefits, I did try really hard to not have acronyms in here. Um, so you'll often hear me refer to that as OPEV. But other post employment benefits is a levy that we um, the state authorized to cover any uh retiree, health and dental um payments that we have or severance payments. It covers all of those things. There's a pretty significant increase, you can see about four hundred and ninety five thousand. And that is actually um picking up the four hundred and twenty six thousand in severance payments that we made for fiscal twenty four. So any teacher retirees that qualified for this, we paid out four hundred and twenty six thousand per the contract requirements and then we are able to levy to cover that cost. Uh, we are only able to levy on contracts that have a sunset clause, which is only our uh Northfield Education Association contract. Long term facility maintenance, uh, you'll see that is a decrease of about four hundred and sixteen thousand. Again, not a change in our total revenue, but a shift between levy and state. Again, not a change in our total revenue, but a shift between levy and state. Um, so there was a change in the formula uh in the last legislative session that allowed more um state aid. So we're getting about 443,000 more in state aid, um, which is a great thing for our taxpayers. Um, pay 24, just for comparison, we got about 52,000 in state aid. So that's a nice shift um for our community. And then the adjustments went down uh pretty significantly, about $500,000. If you recall last year, I don't expect you to recall, which is why I'm telling you, but last year we talked about why it was so large. And it was really um a cleanup of our operating referendum and some other enrollment-based formulas because we were very conservative in our enrollment estimates during the pandemic because we were unsure if students were gonna choose something else. Um, there was lots of movement happening. And so we were conservative because we don't want to be in a position where we're saying we have more students than actually came in and owe money back to the state. And so that cleanup actually happened in pay 24. And so we had an extra $939,000 cleaning up all of those formulas. And so now we are back to more normal enrollment patterns um and more consistency. And so that should level out a little bit. There's always gonna be some things because we're predicting two to three years in advance uh for these formulas, but that should be a little bit more stable in the future. So those are the really big ones that I wanted to point out. Most of the rest of them are very consistent uh for the most part. Again, community ad, 27,000 is really related to that school age care levy. The early childhood family education levy is actually tied to the percent increase in the basic per pupil funding. So that also saw an increase. And then debt services, again, just based on our actual debt payments. So this shows you the last five years of our levy. Um, so you can see we've had pretty um consistent two of the last five years were actually a decrease in our overall levy. Uh, three of the last six, if you want to get specific. Um, and again, the 5.63 um and the 3.84. The 3.84 was the first year of the increased capital projects levy. But again, we saw some debt coming off to help offset that increase. And so overall, our five-year average is about 1.82. Um, I think that's what I wrote down, 1.82% on average over the last five years. So very consistent. Again, we try to be intentional for our taxpayers to make sure that they're not seeing large swings up and down one way or another, um, to keep it as consistent as we can. And in terms of tax impact, again, another small slide with lots of data on it. Overall, um, this is the initial calculation from Ellers. Um, so if we stick with our $350,000 average home, um, right now they're paying about 1,0916 for pay 24, um, and they'd be paying 1,818 or about $98 less per year, a 5% decrease. Again, uh, that is assuming your home value doesn't change. Um, that drives a lot of the calculation and uh we are not in a market where your home value is not changing um every year. But in uh in this calculation, we have to look at it with all the data staying the same to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. So overall, it'll be a decrease in your school taxes, um, depending on how your home value uh stacks up with the total tax base for the school district. Um, so again, we have wonderful uh support from our community. And so I'm again glad we have 27% of our general fund budget coming from their support um and that we're able to to show a decrease um and still be maintaining our budget as well as we can. So I will gladly answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Val. Board members, any questions? Okay, Ben?
Comment, there's a couple questions.
Sure.
Thanks, Val. So I'd challenge anybody to say what's gone up 1.82% over the last five years and increased in quality. When we especially look at what we've heard, you know, presentation over presentation as relates to test scores and just sort of student experience. So I think, you know, hats off to the the entire district, the teachers, the administration, and, you know, certainly the support from the community, I think. Couldn't tell a better story. So thank you for that. Couple of questions. When I look at the referendum market value, that went down from 25 to 24. What's the primary driver there?
Um, the tax base, that referendum?
Yeah.
So I would say um I'd have to go pull the actual calculation. But most of that, so the referendum is probably almost 9 million of that. The rest of it is enrollment-driven formula. And so my uh assumption without looking at all the specifics, um, is that it's likely just enrollment-based formulas where we're getting a slight bit less um in terms of the total revenue.
And then question on the, and thank you for the spelling out the acronyms, the LTMF.
Yes, absolutely.
Long-term facility maintenance. State picked up a significant portion of that. Is that projected to continue then in the out years?
As far as I know, yes. They uh they changed the um uh, the equity calculation um in that formula. And so it's in statute as far as I know, but as we know, lots of things can happen when the legislature meets. But at this point, um, I'm not aware of it being a temporary uh calculation change.
And then lastly, when we look at kind of the primary variable that drives sort of the uncertainty in the calculation. So why we asked for the max versus, you know, landing on a particular number this evening? Is that primarily enrollment-driven or another? What is the driver there?
Um, I would say yes, enrollment, but really just because the there's it is a 38-page, eight-point font document with lots of calculations. And so the state's doing the best they can to make sure everything's as accurate as possible. Um, knowing that there's a lot going into that system. And so it uh it just allows us the flexibility should something happen um where we, you know, under or overestimated, whatever the case might be. But it's my concern is more from the state calculation perspective because it's literally changed every single day since Thursday. Um, and so I just don't want to lock us into a number um that then the state changes tomorrow morning because they missed a formula somewhere.
And do they have a deadline by which they're gonna have to lock down their?
September 30th is kind of the um is the lockdown date because all the districts have to report it to their counties.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely.
And I think also that's part of the several-year revision process. So if there was some kind of issue um with the state formula, they can are able to catch that up in a a year coming down the line.
Yep. All right, Amy?
Val, thank you for your presentation. I just want to say I know that school finances are very complicated. And you do excellent work for our district. And your ability to present a lot of complicated information into a pretty clear uh report um is great. And I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Anyone else? Dr. Homan?
So this is the time of the year where several different governmental agencies um approve their preliminary levy. And you're gonna see a wide variance, right, in how different governmental agencies approve that preliminary levy. And I think we do have to acknowledge that school districts are much more regulated um than our other governmental friends and partners. But I do want you to look at the last six years. Now, I want the community to look at the last six years. If you go back six years, it's a 1.49% year-over-year increase average. To Ben's point, how much else has gone up 1.49% on that little in the last six years? Three of the last six years, our levy has gone down. When you partner that fiscal stewardship and the excellent management that Val does with our budget and providing information transparently, where you are all on the know and have an opportunity to be part of that, our fi- our district finance committee, all of the systems that we go through with priority-based budgeting. You partner that with the 2018 bond referendum where the voters approved $41 million. But because of our due diligence, because of the hard work that we've done in a double A-plus bond rating, a good bid day, and of course, a good old little bit of Irish luck, we did all of the projects we promised the community for $39 million, saving taxpayers $2 million over what they had told us we could spend. We didn't go out and find other comparable projects. We did what we said we were gonna do because we do what we say we're going to do. And taxpayers got a better deal, $2 million better deal than they than they had voted for. Val's talking about expiring uh an expiring levy or retiring levy. That's the middle school. When we look at the middle school and we go back and we take a look at what was promised or was projected in 20 years ago, and we look at the total of principal and interest paid for that building over 20 years, because of Val's relentless um renegotiation and people who came before her, Tom Stringer and Chris Richardson, taxpayers in screen paid $4 million less than what they were told they were going to pay. Our financial outcomes are excellent. We make the hard decisions when needed to be. This board has been part of very hard decisions. You've also seen some great results from difficult decisions like those FFA officers who were up here before you just last night or tonight, because we don't seems like last night now, right? But uh earlier tonight, they were here. So I invite the community to take a look at our results. Our results, I will say, are exceptional. We do what we say we're gonna do. We deliver, we underpromise, and we overperform. And so I know there's a lot of opinions in all communities across uh the state and the country about uh other governmental agencies' fiscal priorities. I simply ask people to take a look at the results. And if you are frustrated with other governmental agencies, I ask that people hold them accountable. We welcome accountability for our results, and we will talk to anybody about our results. But right now, there is a lot of government conflation. And we want to be super clear about the data that we've presented to you and how we have acted as an entity, and we have acted in a trustworthy way. And so when people are thinking about this over the next couple of months, some really important decisions coming before them, I say this with all due respect, to take a look at what we have done, how we have behaved as a very transparent and responsible steward of dollars that are entrusted to us. And if you have frustrations with other governmental agencies, there are systems to hold those agencies accountable. Val Murdestorf is a genius, and she does a great job of making sure that she manages our finances. But it's about everybody because she's created a culture of stewardship. Every single school improvement plan or school improvement showcase you've seen has talked about stewardship. It isn't just a buzzword. It is how we do business. So I thank you for the chance to just want to bring this to uh bring this together for people thinking about this as all sorts of governmental agencies are approving these preliminary levies right now. And just thank Val and the board for your oversight to make sure that we're delivering on our promises to the community.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else comment or question at this point? Okay, thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, motion passes. Okay, our um item eight is items for information. We have a retired educators luncheon coming up. Board members are invited to attend the district's annual retired educators luncheon Friday, October 4th. The luncheon will be at Ruth's on Stafford beginning at 11:30. If you plan to attend, please RSVP with Anita no later than September 26th. Our future meetings are our regular meetings at 6:00 PM in this boardroom. They are Monday, October 14th and 28th, and Tuesday, November 12th, 6:00 PM in this boardroom. That is all the business that we have tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, move by Jeff. Second. Second by Jenny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you.